All right, let's go ahead and get started. This is our auditor meeting. Today's date is April 8, 2025. The time is 3:00 P. M. In attendance are Commissioners Eberlein, Duncan, and Matari. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order other changes to the agenda. I do have an amendment that was made yesterday. It was the executive session, so assuming there's no issue with that, I'll take a motion to accept the amended agenda.
It was done after 24 hour, I mean, it was outside of 24 hours.
Yeah, well, I did ask counsel on that, and he suggested we do that.
Okay, because it's not listed as amended, so it was...
I mentioned to him that we put it in. It was greater than 24 hours when we put it in. And he said, "Well, go ahead and do that," but, you know...
I move that we accept the addition of item two, the executive session.
What does that do?
We're just, the executive session was added yesterday afternoon.
So it remains as that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. Second?
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. All right, well, it's done. Public comment. Hearing none. First item, FY 2024, audited financial statements and external audit. And it's an action item. We have Brandy Falcon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brandy Falcon, for the record. We have Jody Doherty, the audit partner from Ida Bailey, on the line. So I'm actually going to have her start us off, covering a couple of the key letters that Ida Bailey compiles and delivers to the board. Are you there, Jody?
Yes, I am here.
Perfect, take it away.
All right, thank you, Brandy. So like Brandy said, my name is Jody Doherty, and I am the audit partner on this engagement. And you have the ACFR before you, and I just wanted to go over the pieces that belong to Ida Bailey that are on Ida Bailey's letterhead. Everything else in the financial statements was prepared by the county staff. So I'll let Brandy talk to those pieces here in a minute. So the first letter that is on Ida Bailey's letterhead is on page seven of the financial statements. And this is the independent auditor's report. And this letter states that, in our opinion, the accompanying financial statements that you're looking at present fairly, in all material respects, the financial position of the county and its funds as of September 30, 2024. It also points out in this letter that we did not audit the North Idaho Fair and Rodeo or the Cootney County Emergency Medical Services System. Both of those were audited by other auditors, although they are included in these financial If you flip to page nine, I wanted to point out that the financial statements also include required supplementary information. This required supplementary information is in the financials, but we do not express an opinion on those financial statements, or on those, sorry, on that required supplementary information. We did apply certain limited procedures to those, so as we go through the audit and review the ACFR, we do apply certain procedures just to make sure everything looks good, but we do not audit them and we do not express an opinion on them. Also included in the financial statements are what's called supplementary information. This is the combining non-major fund financial information, the budget comparison schedule, and also the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. So these, we do take a look at, and we audit in relation to the financial statement as we're doing that audit. And for those, we can say that they are fairly stated in all material respects in relation to the financial statements as a whole. So I just wanted to point out, there's a couple of layers to our opinion. Any questions on this first letter?
Any questions? No.
All right, then moving on to the next letter, that's on Ida Bailey's letterhead. If you flip all the way to the back of the report, on page 135, this is our independent auditor's report on the internal control over financial reporting. And this is the saying that we did our audit in accordance with government auditing standards. So on the first page of that letter, about a little more than halfway down, it lets you know that we did look at internal controls over financial reporting as we were designing our audit procedures, but we did not test them in order to express an opinion on the effectiveness. So this is just letting you know that we didn't go into as much testing as we would have needed to do to give an opinion on the effectiveness of the internal controls, but we did take a look at them as part of our audit procedures. At the top of the next page, you will see that we did have, we did identify one deficiency in internal control that we consider to be a significant deficiency. And this letter will, does define for you what a significant deficiency in internal control is. And I'll talk about that deficiency in a minute here. We also take a look at compliance while we're doing our audits. So again, we don't give an opinion on the compliance with laws and regulations, but we would point out to you if we found any non-compliance, and we did not find any during our testing. If you flip to the next page, page 137, this is the final report...
Jody, can you just state which page you're on exactly?
Yes, so I just talked about page 135 and 136.
Okay.
And now I'm going to move on to 137.
Thank you.
And Jody, I think, so for the act, the printed ACFR they're looking at, the next letter you're about to talk about, the report on compliance for federal program, that starts on page 136, in the printed one they're looking at. So mark page 136.
I can see that.
Thank you. My PDF version must be a little different.
Well, we're caught up.
Okay, all right. So on this letter, this is talking about the audit that we perform over your federal programs. And this year, the major program that we tested was the ARPA funding. We test not only compliance, but we also test internal controls over compliance. And in this letter, we would let you know if there were any compliance issues that we noted during our testing, or if there was any control deficiencies over compliance that we noted during our testing. And we did not have any compliance findings or internal control over compliance findings during our audit this year. So any questions on those, on these last two letters I just talked about?
Any questions? No questions so far.
All right, so if you proceed just a couple more pages, you'll see the schedule of findings in question costs, and you'll see the finding, financial statement finding that we have for this year. So just to give you a brief overview, when we were doing our testing over two new standards that came out, one, two years ago, one last year, and these standards are, cover the capitalization of leases and subscription-based information technology arrangements, so any, so software arrangements that you might have with certain vendors. And certain of those agreements need to be capitalized and then amortized over the life of the agreement. So when we did our testing this year, we did note some leases that were calculated incorrectly, and we noted a subscription-based agreement that didn't get addressed like it should have. And so we did bring those to the attention of management. We didn't think it raised to the level of a material weakness in internal control because the financial statements were not materially misstated by these, by these errors. So we did call it a significant deficiency in internal control, which is a lower-level deficiency than material weakness, but we still felt it should be brought to the attention of management and the board. Any questions on that finding?
That was really just an exception on those particular leases. Is that correct?
Yep, that is correct.
So it wasn't the standard practice?
Correct.
Right, they, you know, the county has a policy in place, it's, but it is fairly new, and these ones slipped through the cracks, I would say. Brandy, I don't know if you have more to add?
Yeah, so the two leases, on page 140, under effect, it tells you that there were two lease receivables for $264,000. So those were both airport leases, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So we track all the airport leases in debt book, but we have almost 200 leases.
Right.
And those lease terms are getting more and more complex, and the only way we know to track them is to just keep an eye on business meeting agendas. And when it seems that the airport is bringing some forward, some lease thing, we review the backup and try to make the updates in our lease software. And so some of those terms are getting to where it's like, if the land is developed, then the rate goes to this, if not, the rate is this. So they're just getting a little bit more complex for our staff to input. And so going forward, some of the changes we're making is, management is going to be reviewing all of the changes that get input into debt book each week in regards to changes or additions in airport leases. We're also doing some additional training on lease accounting. We also, what we really need to do is try to get the departments to understand the new accounting for leases, because that plays a crucial role as well in them understanding where to code certain expenses. And then we're also wanting the airport to review quarterly or annually, that we want the airport director to be looking at the lease records that are in debt book to tell us if they're being input and recorded properly. And then in terms of the SEBITA error, SEBITA stands for Software-Based IT Arrangement. We have to capitalize those. That really, we need to do more work educating IT on what that means, because there's so many software-type expenses that flow through our system in so many different accounts. It's very difficult for us to catch all of them, and so we need to do a better job of helping IT understand what a SEBITA is, so they're recording it in the correct account, which helps us to catch it. And then there was one that we identified ourselves that we had missed in a prior period that we corrected. So hopefully that gives you some more context around that issue.
Thank you.
Are these federal guidelines or state guidelines?
The guidelines for lease accounting, those are actually GAAP guidelines, GASB, so Government Accounting Standards, that we have to follow. Did you have anything else, Jody?
I'm not on the financial statements. I did want to talk about the governance letter, though, so I don't know if you want me to wait and do that after you're done, or go ahead and do that now?
No, go ahead and go for it.
All right, so you should have also received a letter that's outside of the financial statements, and this is how we communicate with those charged with governance about the audit and how it went. And this is where we would communicate things with you that we feel like you need to know at the end of the audit. So a couple of things I wanted to point out in that letter. On the second page of the letter, it talks about significant risks identified, and I just want to point out to you that this is not us telling you that there was anything wrong at the county, that we've, we've found anything, that we, that there's a significant risk of something that we identified. What this is, is professional standards. We are required, as auditors, to go through and evaluate where we think there are some risks, and then we focus our audit procedures on those areas of significant risk. And about two years ago, we were required to communicate with you what we identified as a significant risk while we did our audit procedures. So again, these aren't anything we observed while we were doing our audit, as much as these were just part of our planning of our audit procedures. So those are the significant risks identified. So management override of controls and revenue recognition, those are required significant risks. And so every time we do an audit, we have to identify management override of controls and revenue recognition as a significant risk. So that is not unique to the county in any way. And then we also identified landfill, self-insurance, and pension as a significant risk, only because they are pretty significant estimates. And of course, estimates are always subject to risk, and so we spend a little more time on those estimates. So I just wanted to point that out. Now, the other couple of things I wanted to point out, if you go to the third page of the letter, we remind you that, once again, there's some significant estimates in the financial statements, and of course, estimates are always subject to change. And then we, if we had significant difficulties during the audit, this is where we would communicate that with you in this letter. We did not encounter any significant difficulties. Under the uncorrected and corrected misstatements, this is where we'd let you know if there were some misstatements noted that were corrected by management as part of our audits. We did not have any this year, but what we did have related to those leases and the SEBITA that we were just talking about, for those, when we brought those to management's attention, they decided that they weren't material enough to go in and record and redo the financial statements. So those are called uncorrected financial statements. And so that is what we are disclosing to you right here. It looks like there's a lot, but it's only because we are required to provide the information to you by opinion unit. So the airport fund and the general fund is where the errors were found, the missed leases, and then the airport fund and the general fund roll up into the governmental activities on the financial statements. So they're, they're all the same leases, it's just, this is how we have to disclose it to you. If we had disagreements with management, we would let you know in this letter, but we did not have any disagreements. And we did not have any other significant matters, findings, or issues that we wanted to communicate with you. So that's the governance letter. Any questions on that?
Any questions? The only question I have is, it just sounds like that things turned out pretty well for the county overall?
I would agree.
Brandy?
That's all I have, Brandy, if you want to...
All right.
...take it over.
Thank you, Jody, I appreciate it. So Commissioners, I'm just going to briefly go through some key points in our financial statements. You should have your printed ACFR in front of you. That stands for Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. On the, in just the first page, inside, we acknowledge the staff in the auditor's office that helped prepare this report. It is significant, it's required by many various laws and regulations, and it's a significant amount of work, takes a lot of professional competence. And so I really appreciate all the work that the auditor's staff puts into this document, specifically our deputy finance director, Keith Taylor, is in charge of the entire audit process and the compilation of this report. He does a fantastic job. And then we have a senior accountant this year, Kyle Westerman, who is a rock star and has really been a huge asset to our team, and he is a huge part of compiling this document as well, and we really appreciate his expertise. So I'm going to just flip to page seven. Oh, wait, I apologize, not page seven, page 11. So this is the first page of the section called Management's Discussion and Analysis. This section of the report, we just kind of discuss the year in review. I'm not going to go through the whole thing. On the first page, we do mention that in fiscal year '24, the board opted for a 3% tax increase. As a reminder, that was a while ago now. That was the tax increase that was taken for fiscal year '24. The county had no outstanding bonded debt at fiscal year-end 2024. And then the Board of County Commissioners, 2024 Assigned Fund Balance Policy directed $30.4 million of funds to be set aside for various future projects and uses. At the bottom, we have some discussion around the ARPA funds. We discuss how the majority of them were assigned to go towards funding the expansion of the Justice Building. And as a reminder, we will finish spending all of our ARPA dollars in FY '25, I believe, and so we can expect probably to have a little bit of a decrease in our interest revenue earned, just because we have spent down, you know, over $30 million in the last couple years of ARPA funds. On page 12, but third paragraph down, there's a brief narrative about solid waste. Our enterprise fund, they gained over $500,000 in net position. If you're familiar with finances for like private industries, you could, net position is a similar concept as retained earnings, it's the equity accounts. And so solid waste, $500,000 increase is actually pretty small for the solid waste fund. The small increase is primarily due to increases in their hauling contract expenses, those have gone up significantly. And then they have had increases in depreciation expense, and then the landfill depletion increased approximately $2 million. And Keith is going to jump in with anything I forget to say. So, on page 16, we have a table at the top that kind of lays out 23 and 24 comparison of some assets and equity accounts. So at the bottom, under the governmental activities column, at the bottom, there's a line that says net investment in capital assets. So you can see in 2023, that was $74.2 million, and in '24, it was $91.8 million. So that just shows you the year-over-year increase in the county's assets. That's a reflection of equipment we've purchased, improvements to facilities, and even new facilities that we have purchased or constructed. Going to page 26, this is our statement of net position. If you're more familiar with finances of private companies, this statement is probably most similar or most comparable to the financial statements you would be used to looking at. On the far right, we have the reporting for our component units, which, the first one is the North Idaho Fair and Rodeo. And I did wanted to explain, the Fair and Rodeo this past year actually changed their fiscal year dates to align with the counties. So they used to be on a calendar year-end, now their effective FY '24, their fiscal year aligns with the counties, and that was a significant amount of work for them. They completed essentially one and a, a year and a half's worth of audits.
Actually, a year and three quarters.
A year and three quarters.
Sorry, that's 21 months.
21 months of audits, within the timeframe, usually you would do a 12-month audit. So the new auditor that they hired was wonderful, and then the Fair did a lot of work to make that happen, and so we really appreciate the work that they put into that. Our other component unit next to them is KCMS, the ambulance district. On the left, under the primary government heading, you can see that we have the numbers for governmental activities and then business-type activities. The business-type activities is our solid waste fund, which is our, the county's enterprise fund. And then the governmental activities column is all of our other funds, including our health insurance fund, which is Fund 14. I'll just call out a couple of key numbers here. At the very top, under governmental activities, you can see cash, and cash equivalents is $88.7 million. That's probably the best snapshot, if you wanted to know our cash position as a county. Keep in mind that much of that, well, portions of that cash does have restrictions on how it can be used. For example, the cash for the airport fund or for the Parks and Waterways Fund can only be used for those purposes. Taxes receivable current, the $61 million at the next line down, that's our FY '25 levy amount. So we always book the next year's levy as a receivable for the year ending. Let's see, going down, under business-type activities, you can see that there's $15,668,000. That is the cash held by solid waste for their closure and post-closure expenses. That's the money that they're going to need to close, what location?
Fighting Creek.
Fighting Creek. When Fighting Creek eventually needs to be closed, those are the costs, the cash held for the closure and remediation...
Yep.
...expenses. We have a line under governmental activities of $12.8 million, cash held for federal grants. That is all of the ARPA cash that we had left as of year-end FY '24. Going down to the liability section, under long-term liabilities, we have a line called leases and SEBITA liability. So that is the long-term liability portion of various leases and IT arrangements, and then the, oh, I'm sorry, that's the short-term portion. And then the next one under, for 1.7 million, is the long-term liability portion for all of the various leases and IT agreements the county has. So those are leases where we are the less C...
Yes.
And so we are paying somebody else to lease something. I think, at the very bottom, under net position, you can see restricted, and it says Note 16. So if you want a further breakdown of what goes into that number, you can go to Note 16 in the Notes to the Financial Statements section. The unrestricted dollar amount of $30.6 million, that includes our assigned and committed fund balances, governmental reporting on this statement, those are included in the unrestricted line. So, going to the next page, page 27, this is the county's statement of activities. This is a full accrual accounting statement. It's not the easiest to read. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. So on page 28, towards the bottom, there's a number, $21,354,000. That is the change in net position for governmental activities. So you can think of that as our net position or our equity increased $21 million, is a simple way to think of that. A big part of that was $11 million in interest earnings, and that's also includes the, some of the gains on our investments. On the, page 27, on the left, under the expenses column, total primary government expenses is $145 million. That includes depreciation expense. Going to page 29, this is the governmental funds balance sheet. This statement is probably more, most closely similar to what you would think of as cash accounting or checkbook accounting. It is the modified accrual basis, so it does have some exceptions to that. So on the far left, you can see that the reported data for the general fund. Under assets, we have a line called litigation settlement receivable for $3 million. That is future opioid settlement money that we will be receiving over the next, is it 20 years?
Yeah, 20, maybe 25.
Yeah, 20 to 25 years. So we'll be receiving that money for a long time. We have, under liabilities, advanced revenue... We have, under liabilities, advanced revenue grants for $13 million. That is all the grant revenue that was deferred at year-end. And then under the airport, I wanted to point out, under deferred inflows of resources, there's a line that says lease inflows. And under the airport column, it's $16.4 million. You can think of that as future lease revenues that we'll be receiving over the life of the leases at the airport, as they were as of September 30th, 2024.
So just, just to jump in on the advanced revenue for grants, the vast majority of that $13.6 million is the remaining portion of the justice, the ARPA monies that are left that we're spending on the, on the building of the Justice Center, so.
Thank you. Down at the bottom, under fund balances, at the bottom, you can see the line that says unassigned. That's what you can think of as our emergency funds, plus all of the extra revenue that got dumped in to our unassigned fund balances at year-end. And that's kind of our starting point that we'll use probably in the next week or so, when we go through our assigned fund balance exercise, where you can go through and allocate our extra funds that we have available to different capital projects or uses.
Brandy, what's the unassigned? Is that our savings account?
Yeah, so the unassigned is what I just said, emergency funds. And that, this number includes all the extra money that got returned. And so then in FY '25, I go and I pull out all the extra money that we don't need for emergency funds, and we moved it in, we move it into the assigned column. Yes. So the assigned line of $24.7 million, that's the assigned fund balance that was left at year-end that we didn't spend, that's yet to be spent on those different projects you have it set aside for. Page 31 is the Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balances for our governmental funds. Only thing I would point out here is, again, it shows our interest revenues under general fund of $11 million. And then lastly, on page 69, note 15 is an explanation of the change in the reporting period of the fiscal year for the fair and rodeo, in case you were interested in looking at that. And then on page 142 is our Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. We call this the SIFA. It's a document we're required by the federal government to prepare in accordance with their formatting requirements. And it shows all of the expenditures of federal money the county had for the entire fiscal year. Sometimes that's of interest to people, so it should, it's formatted according to, you know, what federal department it's under and what program and the name of the grant and all that good stuff. So those are the main highlights I wanted to go over in this document. Overall, like Commissioner Matarri asked, good year for the county. Nothing of concern to bring to your attention. Fund balances are in good shape. I look forward to our assigned fund balance exercise here in a few weeks.
Oh, and just, just to follow up on Commissioner Duncan's question, if you look, if you want a further breakout of things like the assigned fund balance, there, there is a whole note on page, let me get to that. It's note 16 on page 70, gives you a breakout of, of all fund balances for, for all the governmental balances. So you were asking about assigned, the vast majority of those assigned is under the capital project reserve for $21.7 million. That's part of our facilities master plan, is where most of that assigned fund balance is.
Is the two and a half months reserve?
Yes.
In that number?
No, the two and a half months reserve is not in this assigned line right here.
Oh, it's not? Okay.
No, assigned is Fund 11. So our emergency funds are unassigned. It's the 35 million towards the very bottom. Do you see that?
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
So the emergency funds live in the unassigned line.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Last year's, last year's assignment would be in that master plan.
Yeah, yeah.
This year's, yes, is in the unassigned.
But the emergency funds that the board typically thinks of are in unassigned fund balances.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Looking at our cash reserves, and there's a whole bunch of names for them, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? We'll just need a motion from the board to accept the FY '24 audit.
I'm going to make the motion.
Sure.
I move that we accept the fiscal year 2024 audited financial statements.
I'm not ready for this yet. Want to see some more?
Would you like to take a look at, or additional questions?
Yeah, I'd, I'm, the fairgrounds is, is pretty important to me, and I want to see what's, what's going on in that.
So the fairgrounds gets their own audit done, so you can actually look at their audit report. That's not something we present to the board, is that, would you like to see that, the fair's audit?
Okay, so I guess I'm mistaken that.
Well, we, we display.
That was going to be a subject today.
Oh, I think we might. I'll leave that up to the board.
I think that's the next item.
Okay.
We're just approving the audited financials.
Good, because I have no problem with your, your audited financials, because you've done an excellent job, wonderful job. They're very clear, they're easy to read. Attaboy, attaboy.
Thank you.
You want to second the motion?
What motion?
The motion to accept the FY 2024 audited financial statements.
Okay, I'll make a motion to audit the FYI 2024 audited financial statements and external audit.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chair Matarri.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you so much. Next up, item two, Clerk Division, it's an executive session. Clerk Locke, do you want to go into executive session? So I'll take a motion.
I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 742061D.
Commissioner Eberlein.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chair Matarri.
Aye.
I move we exit executive session with staff to proceed as discussed.
I concur.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Public comment? No? All right, 4:29. Meeting adjourned.